The February 5th, 2024 County Council Meeting to Order. For those of you that are here, we welcome you here tonight. We typically have a transportation meeting adjourned that sometimes throws some folks off and they think, well, is the meeting over? Nope, we're just getting started on the main agenda. At this time, I will recognize the Honorable William O'Roddy for invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. Dear Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather once again. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We ask that you continue to watch over us, lead us, and guide us as we continue to do the people's business here in York County. We ask that you bless our service men and women, protect those who are on the front lines that keep us safe from all hurt, harm, and danger. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Lord for which stands one nation under God, in physical with liberty and justice for all.
Bless you. Do you want to pledge?
At this time in our agenda, we have the opportunity to swear in folks who have been appointed to boards and commissions through the county. If I call your name, if you'll please come forward and stand in front of the podium, our county attorney will meet you there to swear you into office. We have Anthony Parrish for the Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board, Lisa Mosley, Rock Hill York County Convention and Visitors Bureau, Charles Parmenter, Bethel Fire Tax District Board, and Ronald Garrison, Newport Fire Tax District Board. And as you make your way forward, on behalf of the council, we all want to thank you for your willingness to serve in this capacity. You do so on a volunteer basis. You don't get paid, and you very rarely get thanked, but we want to thank you here tonight for the service that you provide to the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I surrender my time here tonight. My purpose remains to be at the office, but I would be happy to be here today. I solemnly swear that I am duly qualified, according to the Constitution of this state, exercise duty from the office, as I've been permitted, and that I will to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof, preserve protection within, serve protection within the Constitution of this state, the Constitution of this state, and the United States of America. So, we got you. Thank you so much again. Congratulations.
Thank you again to all our volunteers who do that service. We do not have any appearances tonight. We do have a public forum session, and we only have one individual who has signed up for that, and that is Scott Coconhour.
The voice from Fort Mill.
Oh, yeah, you'll get something from him. Hey, Scott Coconhour, 122 West Oak Street in the beautiful White Bull Park neighborhood of Fort Mill, South Carolina. And just a little update on basketball going on for a girl, South Point. They're going to win the conference. They should go a couple rounds deep. Catawba Ridge Boys are going to win the conference, and they're going to go a couple rounds deep. After that, we'll see. Still hadn't seen a basketball player as good as Anthony Johnson. He was as good as it got during the day and everything. Oh, the next two years, 5A, York County, including Indianland, should be a good conference for the next two years. York and South Point will be 4A, but everybody else will be 5A, so good conference coming up with that. So, oh, about the new website, when we send emails on it, if we could just get a bounce-back email for our records, so we got it, that'd be appreciative. I did have the sewer project, Track 31, that was kind of resolved. I still haven't seen a check on that. I have asked for y'all to relook at that and increase that amount to, and I feel like I've saved the county more than twice that, so if that could be resolved in a timely manner so we can all go on with our lives, I'd appreciate it. The treaty ordinance that you're working on, we tried it in Fort Mill. We just thought it was too much of a burden, so we did away with it. I appreciate you taking schools out. I understand why you take county buildings out, but what's good for the goose is good for the gander. It's kind of the philosophy on that. And now the industrial is excluded or partially excluded. Here again, you're putting small businesses at a competitive disadvantage by not excluding small businesses. So, once you have an ordinance and you start poking holes in it, you know, you're getting kind of selective. I just hate again when David Tepper gets a better advantage than a small business person in York County. So, hey, thank you for everything you do.
Fort Mill's getting a new high school? Are they working on that?
Indianland, bond referendum's coming up. Fort Mill's got a bond referendum coming up for not a new high school today. There's rumors of something in the future, though.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Y'all take care. Have a good evening.
Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously.
We move now to our public hearing items, which is on page 10 of the agenda. Our first public hearing, rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 23-47, tax map number 529000031, to rezone from AGC to RUD, 3.98 acres in District 4. Mr. Buena.
Yes, just one moment. We'll get the slides up here. There we go. So, yes, this application is at the intersection of West Rambo Road and Sims Road. The request is to go from AGC to RUD, just under four acres there. The applicant is proposing to subdivide this one parcel into three parcels of an acre and change each, so here is what that would look like. Here's that subdivision in context with the surrounding area, so you can see there are other parcels of similar size in that immediate vicinity. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning request. It is consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map for rural residential. While RUD is not immediately adjacent at this time, it is in the vicinity, directly to the west, and there are similarly sized one-acre lots on Rambo Road nearby. By a 6-0 vote, Planning Commission likewise recommends approval.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions for staff before we open public hearing? Mr. Roddy.
Is there any intention to put stick-built mobile homes what's counted?
I do not have an indication from the applicant on the type of bill they intend to put on the lots.
But mobile homes could go in RUD?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? If so, if you'll come forward and give your name and address, and you can speak to the council.
Thank you. I'm Vincent Blackwell. I live at 3129 right beside the parcels of blackjack land. We've got drainage issues already there on the backside of it, and there's a lot of swamp land because all the water runs out of the pastures and everything above us. Comes down trying to go through a 36-inch pipe under Rambo Road, and it stays wet down there all the time. It's just my backyard, you can't walk in it in the wintertime because the water's running through it. I have pictures and all that of it. So, that property, I mean, the ditch is not cut well. It takes the water, and it had been for years, and that's the reason all that is just swamp in the backside of them three parcels that we're talking about. And I just want to, I'm not against, you know, building. I just don't want my property to be flooded worse than it already is, you know, because I've seen three lots up on East Rambo, 246, and I think it's 270, but they built, just pushed in dirt, built it up, and built a house on it. And when we had that 50-year rain the other day, it looked like it was on an island out there, and that's just what I don't want for my property because I don't have but that little stretch through there, one acre. And already got issues already because of the drainage there, so I just want to know that whoever is doing it, that I'm not going to be having to shell out money to get my property because I can't build mine up. My house is already there. It's a grade, you know? Like I say, it's level, you know, a lot of level land right there, and there's just not enough infrastructure, you know, to take it under the Rambo Road, and it stays very wet. And I just want, you know, to know that I'm not going to be flooded out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
How many properties are you up from the property in question?
I'm right beside.
Right beside, okay.
3129.
Okay, thank you.
On Sims.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this request?
Hello, my name is Wade Meredith. I live at 550 West Rambo Road, which is right around the corner from Sims and Rambo Road where the proposed rezoning take place. And as the gentleman spoke, we live in the Blackjacks. If you don't live in the Blackjacks or you've never worked in the Blackjacks, you have no idea what it's like out there. That land is ultimately, over the generations, has been used mostly for farming, cotton fields, wheat fields, things like that. And my particular piece of property, just like he speaks on behalf, the water's got to go somewhere, and we have watched some of these other houses be built on Rambo Road, and I kind of giggle and laugh to myself. I wonder if the people buying the house that's being built knows what they're getting into, and then not long after it's built, you ride by and their whole front yard is underwater, so they're coming and they're trying to add more, you know, drainage ditches and things like that as well. And I actually have a video, if, I don't know if I'm allowed to show it to you or not, but I have a video of that particular piece of property when it rained a few weeks ago, and that particular piece of property was flooded as well. So, if we add more, you know, homes to that site, to that location, where's that rainwater going to go? Because right now, we are struggling out there, the more houses that are being built. So, I ask that it stay RUD.
Thank you, sir. If there's information that you want to share with our clerk, I don't know that she'll be able to, is there any way to share, project that? No?
It might take me a minute.
Can you email it or?
Do you have it on the flash drive or what?
While he's doing that, is there anyone else who wishes to speak against?
My name is John Clark. I live at 2876 Burnsdale Road, which is right down, right down the road, Rambo. We live facing the railroad track there on Burnsdale. And just to piggyback on what these guys here said, the four lots, I don't know if it's the ones that are being referenced, so the one-acre lots on Rambo Road nearby, but since they have built on those, it's flooding in the roads. It's a safety factor, not just the fact that we can't do anything. It's a safety factor. When you go down through there and we have these kind of rains, you have issues with driving down through there. Fishing Creek is the creek that runs down through there across the Rambo, where all that's going on and where all that water is headed, and Fishing Creek is taking a beating from upstream all the way up to the other side of York County where it's coming from. And, you know, I really, I don't think that the impervious land is being, or the impervious portion of the lands are being looked at as this because when you clear, you create runoff. And when you go to clear as much as they're talking about clearing there, to put septic systems and wells, because you have to have both of those there in the Blackjacks, it's going to, it's going to create a lot of runoff onto the road right there at Sims and Rambo. Again, John Clark, 2876 Burnsdale Road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this request? Karen, were you able to pull up? Or you have access? Is it something that you can?
Well, we might have to email that to the council.
At a later time? We can't access it now?
I haven't got it. Anyway, yes.
Is it possibly too large of an attention to see?
We will get you to file.
Is there a way to talk?
Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Anyone in favor?
Move close.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
I would like to, since it's first reading, I want to go ahead and move to approve until we can, I can have further discussion with the staff. Check out the video of any indication that putting three more homes will cause more damage to the neighbors. So, I would like to at least approve first reading until we go and get some further information. I would hate to turn this down without knowing a lot more about what's going on out that way because I know we've had issues with stormwater, so I'd like to approve at least first read until we can, council can get up to speed on what's going on.
Yeah, I'll do a second on that.
Is that in the form of a motion?
In the form of a motion.
Yeah.
Motion and a second. We do have a motion and a second to approve first reading. Any other discussion?
And I'll say to the neighbors who came out tonight with some concerns, I hear the concerns, and we're definitely going to work to see what all is going on to make sure we do make what's in the best interest of everyone because property owners have rights to do what they're going to do with their property, but we wouldn't, I wouldn't feel good about making a decision that's going to hurt other people as well. So, I do want to give this reading an opportunity to go forward so that we can find out what's going on, not to discount any of you guys concerned, but I want to fully understand what's going on, the impacts, and if staff says that, staff has recommended approval, but I can assure you, we've seen staff recommend approvals and we haven't. We've seen Planning Commission approve and we haven't. So, don't give up the fact that we're passing first reading tonight to be the end-all, be-all. We're going to vet this to make sure we're being fair to the property owners as well as taking the concerns of the neighbors into account. So, just want to put that out there so that everyone understands what first reading is. It takes three readings to approve it, so that's my position.
I concur with Councilman Roddy.
Yeah, and I do concur too. Again, it takes three readings, and this will just give us a chance to review the information. There's questions, a lot of questions we're going to have on this thing. Again, nothing gets approved till third reading on this here, so if it does get approved. So, we have time to investigate this, and we appreciate everybody sharing their concerns, and we'll start investigating. Thank you.
Any other comments? I do want to reiterate, and I'm very familiar with the Blackjacks. I live in them. I share your concerns, and I'm not sure that I could support a second reading, but the way that this council works is we defer to the council member whose district is that this is situated in, which is in Mr. Roddy's district, and typically, especially on first reading, allow the property owner to have the benefit of the doubt, to go forward, to find some information. I would ask that staff take a look at the stormwater conditions there and the topography. I do think that it is at the bottom of a hill, and ask for that to specifically be looked into before second reading, but do want to, again, reiterate the process for folks who come out who think that this is just a done deal on first reading. That's not the case. It takes three readings, as Mr. Roddy said, and some additional information to be gathered before then.
Can I make one more comment? And I'll just share with everyone who's in attendance, we've gotten many calls after that big rain that we had, you know, we're discovering a lot more issues going on. I spoke a couple weeks ago about stormwater issues, and knowing that, you know, more people are going to develop property, whether it's on the Blackjacks or other areas, this gives us an opportunity to go out, send stormwater out, send whoever out from public works to find out what can we do to make that intersection even better under normal rain conditions. So, this is definitely something that we can use to further evaluate what's going on out that way, but it sounds like we've had issues prior to this last rain that we've had. So, it's not an end-all, be-all, but this definitely gets this intersection, this part of town on the radar, see what we can do to make that intersection and improve some things along stormwater issue lines. So, I appreciate y'all coming out and expressing those concerns.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries for first reading. Second reading is scheduled for the next council meeting on the 18th. Is that right? 19th? 19th. We move now to item number two, public hearing, rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 23-48, tax map number 6660301005, to rezone from UD to ID, a .89-acre parcel in District 5. Mr. Buena.
Yes, this application does cover a parcel that's just under an acre here at the intersection of Mount Phillips Street and Garrison Road, just outside the city of Rock Hill Limits. The request is to go from the urban development district to the industrial district. The applicant proposes to establish a construction services use on the site, and they intend to locate a 40-foot-by-60-foot office building and have some outdoor storage areas for heavy equipment as well. So, staff recommends approval of this rezoning request. It is consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map. The future land use map calls for this area to be municipal infill, meaning we defer to the city of Rock Hill's plans for this area. Their plan calls for this area to be employment center. The applicant is weighing whether or not to annex this property into the city in the future. There's some utility items that the applicant will have to discuss with the city at that point in time. There are single-family homes directly across the street from this property, and that's an unfortunate legacy of the impact of the UD district, which allowed essentially all uses at some point in time. However, there is industrial district immediately adjacent and in the vicinity. There's some paper products manufacturing on the east side of Mount Phillips Street there, so staff is recommending approval, as is the Planning Commission by a 5-0 vote.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any question for staff before we open public hearing? Hearing none. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request?
Yes, ma'am.
If you'll come forward and give your name and address.
My name is Melinda Brown, and I live at 257 North Garrison Road, and I've been there for 38 years. I've been there since August of '85, and before, there was a lot of trees and stuff over there, and I couldn't even see Tucker Road or Mount Phillips, you know, it runs that way, then Tucker runs back up where the Corvette place is at. And I was wondering if they were going to put up some sort of sound barrier or something or, because when I go out the front door, that's all I see is just an open, empty space, and like I said, I've lived there for going on 39 years, and I have a little dog, and it, every time the beak, 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 beak goes on, they've out, he's out there having a fit, and I'm trying to calm him down, and I'm just wondering if they were going to put up some kind of sound barrier or, I don't know, you know, I don't know what they're going to do, you know? I mean, I don't mind them being there. I'm not against it. I'm not against any kind of business going up because Lord knows we need it, but I'm just concerned about the Noahs and talking about the water. When we got this last heavy, heavy rain, it was washing out into the road and coming across the street, coming across the street, and it was just puddles, I mean, huge puddles of water over there in that open area.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and ask Jonathan, with this expansion, is it required, as I understand it, is going to allow for a small expansion for an existing business? Are they going to be required to meet the buffer yard requirements?
So, in answer to the first part of your question there, no, this is a new business, not an expansion of an existing business. There is a similar business located directly at the intersection there, so similar type of operation, but this would be a new distinct business, is my understanding of the application. But they would need to abide by the buffer yard requirements for the adjacent properties, yes.
Okay, I'm looking on the staff report, and in the bottom, it says that it's consistent with the plan, which allows for modest expansion of existing businesses. That's where I picked that up from. We can, so was the answer to the question that they will have to meet buffer requirements?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? If you'll come forward.
My name is David Long. I'm the current.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and ask Jonathan, it... With this expansion, is it required? As I understand it, it's going to allow for a small expansion for an existing business. Are they gonna be required to meet the buffer yard requirements?
So, in answer to the first part of your question there, no, this is a new business, not an expansion of an existing business. There is a similar business located directly at the intersection there. So similar type of operation, but this would be a new distinct business, is my understanding of the application. But they would need to abide by the buffer yard requirements for the adjacent properties, yes.
Okay, I'm looking on the staff report, and in the bottom, it says that it's consistent with the plan, which allows for modest expansion of existing businesses. That's where I picked that up from. We can... Was the answer to the question that they will have to meet buffer requirements?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second, second.
Motion in a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Do we have any motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Since this is my district, I'll chime in first. I would like for staff to make sure that Melinda has details. And if you'll leave your name and number with our clerk on your way out, that way I can reach out to you and talk to you about what the buffer requirements are, and I can explain some of those things to you. As had already been communicated in some of our other rezonings, since this is consistent with the area itself and is consistent with the business there, this is appropriate and I think consistent with the comprehensive plan, which is what we use to guide our development plans, and which has public input on that. And so allowing first reading will give the property owner and you all an opportunity to work through some of the changes. There will be two more readings that are required before this would be approved by council. But I'll make sure if you leave your name and number to reach back out to you and share with you what those buffer requirements will be and work through any other questions you have.
Do you have a quick question for Jonathan? Jonathan, quick question on this one, too. In regards to this business, is there any indication of the amount of traffic that this will be generating at this point?
There has not been a preliminary TIA. Based on the construction services business, really, you're gonna be looking at a couple of employees coming and going and heavy equipment coming and going to the site. So really, a borderline immaterial amount of traffic.
When, when heavy equipment, as far as that goes, the road itself, when you say heavy equipment, you're saying tractor-trailer, or what are you referring to?
So, construction equipment.
Construction equipment, okay. Okay, thank you.
I'll just note on the applicant report, it does say expand an existing grading company. This is point eight-nine acres to... They intend to construct a forty-by-sixty building to provide office space and areas to maintain the company's existing trucks. So that's the purpose of at least what was included in the staff report that we have.
Yeah, and there was an amended staff report, so you might have the original one. So the... There was a disconnect between the applicant, which is an agent for the property owner, and the property owner communicating that correct information to staff. So we've amended that staff report. So that should be included now. It is a distinct business, but it does have dump trucks, this new business as well.
Okay, if you'll make sure to send me that updated staff report, and I'll reach out to the individual who came to speak out. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to public hearing, item number three. Rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number twenty-three dash forty-nine. Tax map number five-three-one-zero-zero-zero-zero-three. To rezone from AGC to RUD of one-point-five acre portion of a thirteen-point-four-five acre parcel in District Five.
Yes, this application is just a portion, a one-point-five-eight acre portion of an overall thirteen-and-a-half acre parcel there. The request is to go from AGC to RUD. It's a little difficult to see from the area on the previous slide, so it's a little bit closer look. There is an existing home on this property here on Bridgewater Road. The applicant intends to subdivide out that existing home and sell it in order to finance the construction of a new home on the remainder of the property after a two-parcel subdivision. So staff recommends conditional approval. The request is consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map. The RUD zoning district is supported by the rural residential land use designation. There is RUD district in the immediate area, as well as one-acre lots on Bridgewater Road. By a six-to-zero vote, planning commission did recommend to deny the application. In their commentary, they felt like the applicant could create two lots and still have that same scheme for development and be able to accomplish having a new home constructed and selling one lot. The only difference there is the property owner would lose four acres of property that he intends to keep.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any question for staff? Sorry, did you want to report the condition?
Yes, ma'am. So staff's recommended condition is a familiar one, so the property must be subdivided so that no more than one zoning district is applied to a parcel. And they need to record that within ninety days.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for staff before we open public hearing?
So, would these lots be proportioned... You said one-point-five acre lots? So I'm clear?
Yes, sir. So they're only proposing to do two lots. So they would have the one-and-a-half acre lot that encompasses the existing home, and the balance of that thirteen-and-a-half acres would be that other remainder parcel.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? If you'll come forward.
My name is David Long. I'm the current owner of the property. I... This property has been in our families for three generations, and we got a fourth generation coming along. My son spent most of their summers out there, and my son Sean here actually lived there for a couple of years. And... The primary problem is, we do not know what we're gonna do with the rest of the property other than build one additional house at this time. So the option of breaking it into two five-acre lots then leaves us with a large part of the property that we want to reserve for decisions in the future. We don't want to be forced to sell off at this time. Again, our primary purpose is to build a house because of my age and various medical conditions. My son Sean here has MS, and the house that's currently there, which is a raised ranch, is just impossible for us to get up and down in. The cost to conversion of the house would be quite expensive because the doors don't meet RUD's standards, and I mean ADA standards and stuff. So the cost of restructuring the house is well outside of our means. And I do require the sale of this property with the house to be able to afford to build the ADA standard house next to it. So...
I guess I may not speak real quick. Well, long and short of this, my family owned this property for generations. We want to stay out with mother. We don't want to do anything beyond pulling out that one acre and a half. The only reason that's an acre and a half is because that's what that's required to pull that house out. And if you look right to the next to the next hole, you can see the house on one acre. Then five hundred feet up the road, they've plotted out forty-seven new houses, all of them here. So what we want to do is pull out that one acre and a half to build a cellar. Because I have a flat house. I can't go in there. And the first thing I want to do is live in that house and stay in that house. And if you look at it, you basically have to tear it down and build it up to make it accessible. So we did all the math, and the only natural available answer was was to pull out this house, take down, and go on the other corner, build another house that I can live in till the day I die, and have no one to support me. And we're gonna live in there together for hopefully a whole bunch of years, but that's the plan.
Not so many for me.
But we... There's no other alternative. Your dad worked at the end of the day, threw a handful of the earth, sold the whole thing. And my assumption would be with a development on that one road, how about assuming the building required? And put fourteen more houses in there, had to kill what it was. I mean, I remember being a kid playing on that pond, and I wanted that to go up. I heard my grandchildren have the same opportunities that I had up there. So that's probably the only one to pull out that one, that one small portion. And again, it seems in line with everything else that's happening. It's like, oh, how to build on the road, like I said, it's one-hundred-and-ninety-seven feet, and one hundred acres. They got ten-one acre lot. So this house is gonna be a one acre lot, next to a four smaller lot. We want to make it to the balance of all that property, and we could do it. It's all in the middle of there. Probably variable, but that's the whole problem. It's not a... It's not a money-making scheme. We don't want to chop it up. We want to change the whole of the job, but we just eventually require that. At the... To build a house.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
Move to close. Second.
Motion in a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Just for clarification, motion to approve with the condition?
With the conditions.
Correct.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to our final public hearing. Rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading. Case number twenty-three dash fifty. Tax map number four-two-six-zero-zero-zero-three-zero. To rezone from AGC to RUD. Five-point-two-five acre parcel in District Five.
Yes, this request to rezone from AGC to RUD is on Horse Road, just above, just north of the intersection with Chapel Road and across the street from Booney Road. The property itself is just over five acres. The applicant proposes to subdivide the parcel into two, building a home on the road frontage, and then selling the remainder of the parcel to another buyer for farming purposes. Staff recommends approval. So the comp plan, this request is inconsistent with the future land use map. It's designated for agriculture. Agriculture calls for large lots and farming uses. However, with this request, there is an RUD district directly adjacent to this property. You can see that in the lighter green color on the left. And there are similar lot sizes in the area, both to the north and to the east. The uses allowed in AGC and RUD are also similar. It allows both residential and farming in both districts. By a six-to-zero vote, planning commission also recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Pono. Any questions before we open up public hearing?
I have one question. So how would they access the back parcel?
So that would be typically through the creation of an access easement. So through the code, you can have up to three lots access a road through an easement.
Any other questions?
Even...
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Even with no more road frontage than that?
Yes, sir. So you would have... The front parcel would have all of the road frontage, and you would have an access easement that would be shared between the two parcels. So there's only one road frontage, but there is an access drive that would allow you to access the rear property.
So that road itself would then have to be maintained by the three homeowners?
By the holders of the easement, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? If you'll come forward, give your name and address.
My name's Micah Chapel, eleven-oh-one Alton Road. I have property up, right up the road on Horse. The tract there, you said is what? What, how is it zoned, the little light green in the bottom?
So you're asking for the light green, that's RUD.
Well, according to this, what's the difference between FUV? What is that?
That I believe is probably a reference to farm use value. That's not a zoning designation.
That's not a zoning, okay. The... Well, like I say, I'm against it. I don't really see RUD out there. Anything less than five acres. Like I say, my uncle Kerwood, he established that, which I myself have sold land, and I abided by his wishes, and that's what I would like to see. I mean, you know, like I say, it's in the Black Jacks. I mean, some people pay twen... Between twenty and thirty thousand dollars just to get a setback system out there. Unless you get it to Perk. So... But the... I've got one more. But if thirty-point-eight-nine acres, if it's, you say, RUD?
Yes, sir.
The base taxes are only fifty dollars. So if it was RUD, it would be way higher than fifty dollars. I mean, I myself, I paid probably, you know, not too much, probably that on ninety acres. So I don't see how it can be RUD. I don't, I just don't see it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this request?
I'm Michael Michael, Mike Thomas, while a chapel. Lived there all my life. And we hate to see it get separated to smaller portions, because you know, once you say if you give... You take this part, and somebody gets a hold to it, it spreads. Like, well, I could say, it just crawls all up the damn place. And we don't want to see that happen. And I talked with Miss here, and she said that the owner of the land come to her with, give her an option to buy two-and-a-half acres because she had all... Rosie Lee had already put a mortgage against the property. And she needed the money to keep the property. I've known this woman all my life. She'll end up losing it. And maybe it stays a five-acre tract. It was given to her. She borrowed money against it. No way she's gonna put a home on it and pay for it, in my opinion. Maybe so. And if she fails, it goes under four closures. Bye. That's where I stand. We'd like to keep it in foreign land and not getting the land started splitting up in acres, two-and-a-half acres or acre tract. My granddaddy Kerwood Chapel, he's always fought for it. And it's part of his land that he'd given to them. And he gave it to them for a simple reason, that he was the last child born on Chapel property. And that's where we're staying, and hopefully it works out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak against?
I got a question. Uncle Kerwood's son, Glenn. That was my son, right there. I got a question for you. How many feet off the pavement has she got to give up before she starts any construction? House, barn, oak, pin, oak, it don't matter, any construction. You don't know the answer.
Sir?
Why should you be sitting there?
Mr. Chapel, if you'll just direct your comments to the council.
All right.
If you're looking for the setbacks, do you know what that is, Jonathan? Roll hand.
Setbacks are based on the district and the road frontage, though it would depend. I'd have to look it up in the table.
The road frontage that exists there for this lot, how much is that?
Looks like it's about two-hundred-and-sixty feet.
Okay. That's the road frontage, and we can get the setback.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I've got too much Kerwood in me.
I think we know what position you have. Thank you, sir. Do you have any other comments?
Anybody got any more comments?
Anyone just wanting to know the distance off the road where you can put a home at?
Yeah.
A hundred, hundred-and-forty foot or two-hundred foot?
We can get the setback.
And the amount of road frontage you need for a home to put a house on?
Okay.
Yes, sir. If you want to follow up with me after the media, I can consult the code and let you know.
Yeah, but I think road frontage has changed. It's more than two-sixty, isn't it? Any... Anyone else wish to speak against? If you'll come forward.
My name's David Alvey. I live at eighteen-eighty Davis Farm Road. I own eighteen-and-a-half acres on Horse Road that we purchased to develop later. Purchased it because it is farmland, because it is not dense populated. That was our preference. We'd like to see it continue, so... I guess that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? If you want to come forward, come on.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrea Chapel Clay. I live on forty-two-eighty Horse Road. I just moved there a few months ago, back in August. Me and my husband developed a... Are developing a homestead there. We have about five-and-a-half acres, and it is on farming land. That's mostly what's out there. There's hardly anything else, other than less than acres. Kerwood wanted to keep it that way, and that fam... That land has been in our family for generations. And yes, you have taken great care of a lot of the land out there. I know that you rent from them a lot, I believe.
Can't hear. Can't hear.
Sorry. I believe that Ms. Connie rents farmland, if I'm not mistaken, from chapels. I know she takes good care of it. I just, I don't want to see it get less than five acres. That's how it's always been in the family. And we don't want to open the door for other potential buyers to try and divvy it up into smaller acres as well. And to put homes out there to in the agricultural aspect.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a good one.
Anyone else? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
County Straight, on thirty-three-twenty-five Straight Road. If anybody's in favor of agriculture, not developing, it's me. We own the road across from what Johnny Chapel owns. We purchased that, and sixty acres we farm it. We farm Kerwood's land. We farm Johnny Chapel's land. We, you know, I'm against development in any way. Kerwood gave Rosie five acres to put a home on for her to have. She... Her son approached me to purchase if she could, if I could buy two of the acres, because she could not afford. I was told she could not afford to put the trailer on the land unless she sold some of it. I agreed to buy it to keep the development out, because she could sell it to anybody. And she came to me, we worked the land around it, that Johnny's, it's right across the road from us. To have two acres, the only thing I asked for was to have the road to be able to have an easement to get to the property, in case I needed it. I have no intention of developing it. I really don't need it, just trying to help Rosie out. But she was given the land, and the intent was for her to put a home there. And like I said, her son approached me. I'm willing to help her out. I do not want to see a development. If she had offered to sell all five of it, I probably would have offered to buy all five of it, just to keep the development out in that area. So it's... I'm just trying to help her out. Like I said, I'm against development, especially in that area. I hate to see any agricultural land get developed, because we farm a lot in this area. I mean, we farm twelve-hundred acres in the area, and we grow cotton. So I'm totally against development, but I just wanted to at least acknowledge the... To let y'all know why I'm trying to do this. And I'm trying to keep her from selling it to someone else.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Do we have a motion closed?
Route closed.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Do we have a new motion?
Yeah, I've got a motion to deny on this.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to deny. Since this is my district, I'll say a few words first. Here's the concern that I have. It's not consistent with the land use plan. That's something that council has spent a lot of time going out to the public and getting their buy-in for approving the plans that are going forward. In this particular case, it's vacant land that was gifted just a year or so ago, and it is AGC that was for the purpose of a home. You can build a home, and if it stayed AGC, it can still be leased out for agriculture. And it would also be preserved, which I think accomplishes what the applicants both want, which is to preserve the property and not split that up with two different owners. The biggest concern I have is that with the small amount of road frontage, it does leave a very unusual landlocked piece of property back in the back of this, which... And a third-party owner, which is surrounded by a single owner. And I just don't think that's appropriate planning moving forward. But the main thing that I think is the biggest concern, and what we're trying to be consistent with, is not to approve things that are not consistent with the comprehensive plan. So I support... I support the motion. Any other discussion?
I just had a question from an approval standpoint, from planning commission as well as our staff. Because it seems a bit ironic that our staff would even approve going to RUD in an area that seems to be primarily five acres or better. You know, I don't... I like to understand staff's... You know, I don't, I like to understand staff's thinking. I can't understand planning commission's thinking that we would carve out a smaller portion of a lot when the general consensus of that area is A G C. And we've had cases come before, where people want to carve out just a small part. It would start to change the dynamics of that whole area. So, once we do one, the next applicant can come and say, hey, well, you did it for Suzie, you did it for Johnny. Then now the whole area starts to change. And I don't think our comp plan looks at this area to change to one, two, three acre lots. It's want to keep it to A G C and keep it five acres. So, just curious to know what, you don't have the answer now, but I like to get in the heads of staff as to why would we approve it? Why would the planning commission approve it in a highly less dense area to now start to change it by going to these smaller lots? I just want to make that comment.
Yes, sir. I'm happy to address that. So, the comp plan is a guide, so where staff will often consult the comp plan, as does council. And decisions are made that are not necessarily exactly what the plan calls for in every instance, right? And here we have an instance where the comp plan says that this should be agriculture, but there are more districts than just A G C in this immediate vicinity. So, in that mint green color, that's the R U D district. So, it's directly adjacent and there's a good amount of it. So, that property owner at the intersection could buy rights, subdivide and create small lots already in addition to any of the properties that are further south and further east that are also R U D. So, if we're talking about the, changing the character of the area, it's not necessarily going to do that if we're talking about rezoning this one lot that is directly adjacent. So, that's why there's the, the difference there and planning commission had that same opinion.
Yeah, I just, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, so first of all, you know, I appreciate everybody, see everybody's update tonight. Again, thank you. You know, my concerns were, again, when you look at, the concern over landlock on here, there was that back property, the way it's designed and where this property lays, there was a concern of mine on, on that. Also, the shared driveway component of there, that, that is a, to me, I think it's a futuristic issue that could, could stem, come, come back to be problematic down the road if somebody's using a, such a, put it in such a manner. And again, again, back to I think what everybody else has said here, I think that, you know, we're in a rural area and just the whole dynamics of the, of the, this land and how it's laid out, I just feel it doesn't fit for, for what they're asking here. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
They took everything I was going to say.
All right.
I just think that R U D is the creepiest zoning code we have because what it does is it creeps in on our ag properties. And that's, that's what happens. And as soon as, it's exactly what, I'm going to assume Mr. Chapel said because I think you were all Chapels. So, so I think what happens is, you know, you have, you just keep moving toward that lighter green color because what's adjacent to it. And I believe that, you know, look at the rezonings for District Five on our agenda tonight. It's very concerning to me because, you know, I represent Lake Wylie and I know what happened to Lake Wylie. And what happened to Lake Wylie were rezonings that creeped in over time. And we now sit in traffic and y'all, you know, you look at this and you think District Five and District Three and the other side of District Two are a long way from that, but you're not a long way from that because once it starts, it's very hard to stop. And where it begins, I believe, is when planning commission recommends approval. The, the county staff says, hey, it's inconsistent with the future land use map, but what's next to it is this. I believe in drawing a line with that map. And I know that's, that is just for us to, to, you know, consider. But I spent a lot of time on, on my comprehensive land use plan, as did several and maybe most of the, of the council members here. And I believe that we have to maintain the integrity of what is in that comp plan because the, the faster we allow things to creep into this green space, meaning the darker green or the, even the medium colored green, we've already, we've already watered agricultural down to, we started out with agricultural conservation, we watered that down to conservation dash one and now we got rural development. It's just, I think we have to be very cognizant of, of what happens next when we approve rezonings like this.
Any other discussion? Motion on the table is denied. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion is denied. We do not have any old business or new business. We do have committee and other reports tonight, Economic Development Committee meeting. Chairman Tom Aldette.
Yes. First off, we had a meeting on the twenty-fourth. Primary goal of that meeting was to look at options and explore options for small business in York County. One of the exercises that the committee did and the chair, or the, excuse me, the director of economic development went to Spartanburg and went to Greenville, looked and examined how their small business program works. We are dedicated and focused on bringing in a small business program into the community into York County because we need to protect and help our small businesses in the area. We are looking at a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce that would allow us off also to what I call a four-legged stool, which would, would look to help small businesses when it comes to venture capital, market trend analysis, mentoring program and possibly grant writing. We're looking at across different agencies to support that model. More to come with that, but I thought it was a very good meeting and I think we're taking the next step forward to address something along those lines and bringing it into York County.
Thank you, Mr. Aldette. Justice and Public Safety Committee, Chairman Tommy Atkins.
Yep. We had a meeting for the Justice and Public Safety meeting on January twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, six P M. There was no actions taken and we will have our next meeting on February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, at six P M. to further discuss the fire departments at the Heckle Complex.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Finance and Operations Chairwoman Alison Love.
Thank you. We met today at five-thirty and we considered applications for service for York County forever. We made the recommendations for the reappointment of Steve Hamilton for a second term, the reappointment of Carrie Tilly for a second term also, for Catawba Regional Council of Government. We made the recommendation for the appointment of Bo Leg to fill a vacant seat. The Building Board of Appeals, we made the recommendation for Donald Brown for a first term. And for the Newport Fire Tax District Board, the, the recommendation for the appointment of James Freeman for a first term. We discussed the, we had a discussion regarding modifications to a personnel ordinance. Basically, this change is supported by our Sheriff's Department and county management in hopes that it will, it, it adds a little bit of vacation to, it will add a couple of things, but add a little, a little bit of vacation, a couple hours a month at all levels. It would help with the sheriffs and the sheriff's department and also York County in recruitment and retention, which would be hopefully offset by overtime that we would be able to eliminate once we have more, more people on board. We considered allocation of funds, recommend the allocation of funds from District Two to Bethel Volunteer Fire Department, Station Three, in the amount of twelve hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. And we approved the minutes from the January second, twenty twenty-four Finance and Operations Committee meeting. And present, present were myself and Councilman Aldette and Atkins.
Thank you, ma'am. We have no citizen concerns. Any council, non-agenda comments?
Yes, very quickly. So, the Watson family moved to York County in the mid-nineties. Ken and Diana Watson moved a family here, six children. And who would have thought that they would have raised six fine children? One, Ben Watson, who spoke at the breakfast for the M L K Day breakfast, what, M L K Day? I don't know what day that was, but in January. Did a phenomenal job and he's from York County. So, real proud to recognize him for his contributions back to York County. Secondly, my wife Nikki moved here in two thousand and twenty and last Friday night, the South Carolina Broadcasters Association recognized her with the Masters Award. They awarded awards to five people. She spent thirty-three years as a main anchor down in Myrtle Beach, Florence, all the way down to Lumberton, North Carolina. And so, she earned the Masters Award. So, real proud to have her as a citizen here in York County as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes. Motion for personal matter, personnel matters, county manager search.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will move straight into executive session. We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have any motions?
Yes, we have one motion. A motion to proceed with second round of manager interviews.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.